President.
Councilmember Hughesman.
Present.
Councilmember Hurst.
Present.
Councilmember Hordiola.
Present.
Mr. Mary, you have a call.
Thank you. For the record, we're all here tonight. And, uh, gonna do the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have the Boy Scouts here and they're gonna come and post the colors. Um, so if you guys wanna get ready for your presentation, now's the time. Everybody, please rise.
Audience, attention. Color guard, attention. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, halt. Please post the colors of the United States of America. Please post the colors of the State of Colorado. Please post the colors of Commerce City. Troop, forward march. Right face. Scout salute. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two, left face. Audience, it is trupides.
Alright, since we have these young men up here, I want to allow the opportunity to tell us who you are. Just tell us your names and what troop you're with. And I wanna have the council come down and take a picture with all of you as well. Um, I believe there's some city pins here to give you some pins, right? And, uh, we're gonna make sure that you each get a day pass for Paradise Island or the Rack Center. And that'll be gotten to your, uh, troop leader, um, to be able to hand out to you guys at a later date, okay? Alright, so go ahead and tell us who you are and, uh, what rank you are and, and what group you're with. Here, use the microphone.
My name's Aiden Avery. I'm a Life Scout and I'm part of Troop 414.
Awesome.
My name is Zane Havhav. I am a Tenderfoot and I'm in Troop 414.
My name is Tanner.
That's alright, Tiger. That's good enough, thank you.
My name is Jared Flotis and I am a Life Scout and I'm with Troop 414.
I'm Alex Kujaawa and I am a Second Class and I'm in Troop 414.
My name's Austin Connor and my rank is Bear.
Scout group? Yeah, that's alright.
My name is Keegan Wilson. I am Second Class and with Troop 414.
My name is Gabriel Kujaawa and I'm a Bear in Troop 607.
My name is Wilson Concheris. I am Life Scout and part of Troop 414.
Great, thank you. Uh, let's give these young men a round of applause for coming on tonight. Uh, the council, turn me down front, please. Alright, uh, again, thank you to the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts coming in. Anytime we get the opportunity to allow you to come in and participate in this process, I think it's a great opportunity for us and them. So, thanks again, guys, for coming in. Come back. Alright, next item on our agenda is an executive session. Um, it's an executive session regarding the Third Creek West annexation, but I believe we're gonna have a presentation prior to asking for a motion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright, why don't you go ahead with your presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. At the suggestion of Councilman Hughesman and to help inform your decision about whether you would like to have an executive session tonight, we have a few slides to provide some background about the development and what's prompting, uh, staff's, uh, suggestion that council have an executive session on this topic. The broader concept is a decision that the City Council has the opportunity to make about participating and financing the extension of what we might call a trunk line infrastructure uh, on the, to the east side of E-470 in the nor, in the northern part of our city. The specific, uh, need for the executive session tonight is for City Council to, uh, privately provide direction to city staff as your negotiators as we work through an annexation agreement for a project called Third Creek West. Uh, as part of annexing land into the city, the developer has the opportunity, uh, to make requests of the city as part of an annexation agreement that would be part of the approval to annex the land into the city. Uh, key issues for the Third Creek West development are regional infrastructure. It's needed to support the project and extending that infrastructure, uh, to the east across E-470. Uh, some more minor item, uh, items that we're looking for direction from City Council on are the, the notion of vested rights that would be, uh, part of the annexation agreement and some procedural elements, uh, where we could use City Council's, uh, direction as we negotiate the annexation agreement on behalf of the city. A bit of background about Third Creek West. Uh, we have a, a picture of the Cowley Companies holdings on the next slide. Third Creek West is a portion of the property, uh, that the Cowley Companies owns and it's the first phase of their development, uh, within the City of Commerce City. Uh, this phase is two hundred and thirty-four acres. Uh, the, uh, the number of requests that they are making of the city as part of the annexation, in addition to the annexation, would be the zoning of the property, uh, PUD zoning, uh, for this two hundred and thirty-four acres and several metro districts to help fund, uh, infrastructure improvements within, uh, the development. As I mentioned, there is trunk line infrastructure needed to be extended to the east across E-470 to make this development possible that will also be necessary for, uh, other, uh, development of land, uh, in addition to the land that the Cowley Companies owns, east of E-470. Certainly, there's a lot of vacant, uh, potentially developable land in this part of our community. Uh, it's in this part of our city that we hope to attract, uh, development related, uh, to the airport as part of the regional eretropolis around, uh, Denver International Airport. This map shows, uh, the holdings of the Cowley Companies in the area east of E-470 within, uh, land that's in the city's growth boundary but is not yet in the city. Uh, the property in question tonight, the subject of this executive session, is just the Third Creek West site. As you can see, it's a, a fairly small portion of the total land that this developer owns and would like to develop, uh, at some point. There is, uh, some trunk line, uh, major backbone infrastructure needed east of E-470 in order to facilitate, uh, development east of E-470, namely, in this particular case, sanitary sewer water and road construction. Uh, the developer has a, a complicated list of, uh, financing mechanisms to finance the two hundred and thirty-four acre development that they would like to initiate. They have identified a gap, uh, and the gap is related to the public backbone infrastructure that would need to be built east of E-470 to facilitate their project. Although it certainly benefits, uh, this particular development, Third Creek West, it's also necessary to open that area east of E-470, uh, to development of any kind. The annexation agreement is a key way of memorializing agreements, uh, that would be necessary to them, uh, to induce them to annex the land into the city. So, the purpose of the executive, uh, executive session tonight, the developer has requested, um, financial, uh, funding support from the city through some mechanism to help fill the gap, uh, in their financing plan to fund this, uh, public backbone infrastructure, uh, east of E-470. The city has previously created two general improvement districts that covers this part of our city and the general purpose of creating those improvement districts is to fund, uh, trunk line backbone type infrastructure that benefits, uh, many parcels, uh, many property owners, uh, in an area. The city's northern infrastructure general improvement district was a key financing mechanism to fund, uh, backbone infrastructure in the northern range of the city that helped facilitate development of the city's northern range. The GIDs that are in place in and around the E-470 corridor were intended to serve, uh, a similar purpose. Uh, so, the tool is in place, but the question remains, uh, to what level, uh, does the city want to participate, uh, through its GIDs or other mechanisms to help fund the extension of these trunk lines east of E-470? That's a, a bit of background. We have a few more details that would be best shared, uh, in the executive session in terms of some options for the city to consider. Uh, there have been some study session, uh, agenda items on this topic, but this is a more formal opportunity for the City Council to provide very specific direction to city staff as we work with the developer to finalize an annexation agreement.
Thank you. What are the desires of council? Mr. Hughesman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, last time we had this conversation was during a study session with Representative Zaccalli sitting right in the study session, so I don't see why we can't continue to have this conversation in public when it was done so in the, in the past.
Mr. Madera?
I'd like to move to enter an executive session. Send to CRS 24 dash six, dash 402, friends four, friends B and E, to discuss negotiating positions regarding the annexation of this agreement.
I have a motion, is there a second? Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Further reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those say nay.
Nay.
Alright. You wanna roll call? Uh, I wanna roll call, how about that? Clerk will please call the roll. Alright, for the record, there are six yes, three no votes. Motion is carried. We will go into executive session. The executive session is planned to last a half an hour. Um, hopefully it does not exceed that timeframe. Please be patient with us. We'll be back out in just a little while.
Thank you for your patience to call the meeting back to order. Next item on our agenda is the audience introduction of the city staff. Please pass the microphone around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Jenna Lowry, City Manager's Office.
Brad Cooney, Kimley Horn Associates.
Kip Sharotis, tonight representing Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refuges.
Guillermo Serna.
Buenas tardes, Lucy Molina, gracias.
Sean Quavo.
Philonople.
Taylor Travis.
Jim Travis.
Rhana Sanchez.
David Sanchez.
John Doris.
Judy Doris.
Ron Bruce.
Susan Noble.
Susan Stanton.
Raoul Abad.
Ryan Fio.
Spencer Crouch.
Russ Watterson.
Chris McGinn with the Colorado Patrol and Council.
John Pointon, Adams 14 Schools.
Robyn Curran's Planning Department.
Austin Rollison, resident.
Kavika Berthalet.
Evan Underwood.
I own a long soldier, United for a New Economy.
Nick Klebenstein.
Jim Koschero, resident.
Dan Rinshaw.
Greg Campbell.
Jack Hamlin.
Sheila Harris, Commerce City Historical Society.
Esther Hall, Commerce City Historical Society.
Deborah Bullock, Commerce City Historical Society.
June Younger, Commerce City Chamber.
Sharon Chung.
Duran Cooper.
All right, thank you all for being here tonight. Next item on the agenda is citizen communication. Per our council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. If you're here to speak on an ordinance or a resolution that is not on the consent agenda, please wait until that item is called. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before the city council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. If you wish to speak tonight regarding the regional operator agreement with extraction, you may do so, but comments for staff to consider need to be submitted online or in writing to the Community Development Department. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes, and thank you. So when I call your name, come on up to the podium. We'll start the timer and allow you three minutes to address the council. State your name and address for the record. We'll start with Jim Travis.
Good evening, Mayor Ford and Council. Good to see you all again. My name is Jim Travis. I live at 10233 Salida Street in Commerce City, here tonight to speak about extraction, and I am in 100% support of extraction and hope you all will be as well. I'm hopeful that we are smart enough to learn from other people's mistakes in the past, and I'm speaking most specifically about Brighton in March of 2014, when we had a city council meeting there and they voted for a moratorium on oil and gas. We watched Brighton essentially crumble in 24 hours. We watched hotels go from 100% occupancy to basically vacant overnight. Restaurants, you couldn't get into restaurants in Brighton, and then you could get in any nights you wanted. The bars were full. I remember gas stations after the moratorium was passed, hanging signs that said, "We love oil and gas, please come back." You can't drive around Commerce City without seeing oil and gas and the impact that it has here in this community. I look around and I see all the new houses that are being built here in Commerce City, and I know oil and gas is certainly part of the reason for all the growth in this area. Now, I understand that the moratorium in Brighton is different than what we're discussing here, but it's not all that different. How many times are we going to slam the door in oil and gas's face before they finally say the heck with it and leave town? And I know that's what these activists are trying to do, and I certainly respect where they're coming from in their opinion, although I don't share their opinion. Oil and gas is watching what's going on here in Commerce City, and they're trying to gauge where they're going to be doing business in the state of Colorado. And Commerce City has been a friendly place for oil and gas, and we certainly hope that it continues to be, because a no vote tonight, or a no vote on the extraction, would end up being essentially another moratorium on oil and gas, because they're going to watch and see what happens. This city can't afford to have what happened, like what happened in Brighton. They just can't afford it. There's no way that it can. So y'all, I hope that you will consider this and consider passing extractions proposal the way I've submitted it. Thank you all for your time and have a nice night.
Thank you. Before I call the next person up, I want to make it clear, this council is not considering extractions operators agreement. There's a 21-day comment period that's open. We want people to make comment in writing or via email to the city planning department. Jack Hamlin is next.
Good evening, Mayor Ford and council members. Name is Jack Hamlin, property at 9758 Laredo Street. I'm the owner of Summit Engineering Services. We're a 110-person engineering firm based in Inglewood, Colorado. Several of our employees live here in Commerce City. I'm also a member of Energy Strong Colorado, 15,000-plus-person membership group that is pro-oil and gas. I'm talking today in favor of oil and gas. I've given quite a bit of testimony in Denver and around the Denver metro area, and one thing I've come to is that it's kind of human nature to let emotion drive decisions a lot of times. Being part of an engineering company here in Colorado, we hire engineers and designers that were born, raised, and educated in this state. CU Boulder and Colorado School of Mines, two of the best engineering schools in the country. And we elevate, in the business, we elevate above emotion and anecdotal data, and let past performance pragmatism and empirical data drive all of our decisions. What I'm here to tell you about today is the facilities that our company designs are the safest and cleanest in the entire world. Colorado leads the charge in oil and gas infrastructure design and construction, and we do that because we've happily engaged with communities to find the best solutions. Got a complex mix of variables here in this state, between landowners, mineral owners, environmental folks, and we want to engage all parties as an engineering company to find a solution that meets all those needs. So my purpose here today is to invite anybody in this room, whether you're for oil and gas or against it. I open the doors of my engineering company down in Inglewood to anyone here, if you'd like to learn more about how Colorado citizens design these facilities and do it the best in the world. Happy to walk you through the office and have you meet some of those people. It's really cool stuff what we're doing. Nothing to be afraid of. When you're educated about it and understand it, you'll understand that we too are environmentalists, that we want clean air and water. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Greg Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Greg Campbell. I live at 1328 709th Place, Commerce City. Here tonight, you'll get a lot of different facts and details and numbers about oil and gas. You'll see a lot of arguments for and against it. One of the items, pulling just today from Colorado.gov and Census.gov, just some interesting statistics I wanted to share. Nearly three-quarters of all Colorado homes use natural gas for heat. Another three-quarters use fossil fuels for the creation of electricity, 23% of that being just natural gas. So when you put...
The agenda is the audience introduction. The city staff, please pass the microphone around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Jenna Lowry, City Manager's Office.
Brad Cooney, Kimley Horn Associates.
Kip Sharotis tonight, representing Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refuges.
Guillermo Serna.
Buenas tardes, Lucy Molina, gracias.
Sean Cuevo.
Phil Noble.
Taylor Travis.
Jim Travis.
Rhana Sanchez.
David Sanchez.
John Dorris.
Judy Dorris.
Ron Bruce.
Susan Noble.
Susan Stanton.
Robo Labad.
Ryan Fio.
Spencer Crouch.
Russ Watterson.
Chris McGinn with the Colorado Patrol and Council.
John Pointon, Adams 14 Schools.
Robin Curran's Planning Department.
Austin Rollison, resident.
Kavika Berthalet.
Evan Underwood.
I own a long soldier, united for a new economy.
Nick Klebenstein.
Jim Cashero, resident.
Dan Rinshaw.
Greg Campbell.
Jack Hamlin.
Sheila Harris, Commerce City Historical Society.
Esther Hall, Commerce City Historical Society.
Deborah Bullock, Commerce City Historical Society.
June Younger, Commerce City Chamber.
Sharon Chung.
Doron Cooper.
All right, thank you all for being here tonight. Next item on the agenda is citizen communication. Per our council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. If you're here to speak on our ordinance or a resolution that is not on the consent agenda, please wait until that item is called. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before the city council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. If you wish to speak tonight regarding the regional operator agreement with extraction, you may do so. But comments for staff to consider need to be submitted online or in writing to the Community Development Department. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes and thank you. So when I call your name, come on up to the podium. We'll start the timer and allow you three minutes to address the council. State your name and address for the record. We'll start with Jim Travis.
Good evening, Mayor Ford and council. Good to see you all again. My name is Jim Travis. I live at 10233 Salida Street in Commerce City. Here tonight to speak about extraction and I am in 100% support of extraction and hope you all will be as well. I'm hopeful that we are smart enough to learn from other people's mistakes in the past. And I'm speaking most specifically about Brighton in March of 2014, when we had a city council meeting there and they voted for a moratorium on oil and gas. We watched Brighton essentially crumble in 24 hours. We watched hotels go from 100% occupancy to basically vacant overnight. Restaurants, you couldn't get into restaurants in Brighton and then you could get in any nights you wanted. The bars were full. I remember gas stations after the moratorium was passed, hanging signs that said, "We love oil and gas, please come back." You can't drive around Commerce City without seeing oil and gas and the impact that it has here in this community. I look around and I see all the new houses that are being built here in Commerce City and I know oil and gas is certainly part of the reason for all the growth in this area. Now, I understand that the moratorium in Brighton is different than what we're discussing here, but it's not all that different. How many times are we going to slam the door in oil and gas's face before they finally say the heck with it and leave town? And I know that's what these activists are trying to do and I certainly respect where they're coming from in their opinion, although I don't share their opinion. Oil and gas is watching what's going on here in Commerce City and they're trying to gauge where they're going to be doing business in the state of Colorado. And Commerce City has been a friendly place for oil and gas and we certainly hope that it continues to be. Because a no vote tonight, or a no vote on this, on the extraction would end up being essentially another moratorium on oil and gas. Because they're going to watch and see what happens. This city can't afford to have what happened like what happened in Brighton. They just can't afford it. There's no way that it can. So y'all, I hope that you will consider this and consider passing extractions proposal the way I've submitted it. Thank you all for your time and have a nice night.
Thank you. Before I call the next person up, I want to make it clear, this council is not considering extractions operators agreement. There's a 21-day comment period that's open. We want people to make comment in writing or via email to the city planning department. Jack Hamlin is next.
Good evening, Mayor Ford and council members. My name is Jack Hamlin, property at 9758 Laredo Street. I'm the owner of Summit Engineering Services. We're a 110-person engineering firm based in Inglewood, Colorado. Several of our employees live here in Commerce City. I'm also a member of Energy Strong Colorado, 15,000-plus person membership group that is pro-oil and gas. I'm talking today in favor of oil and gas. I've given quite a bit of testimony in Denver and around the Denver metro area. And one thing I've come to is that it's kind of human nature to let emotion drive decisions a lot of times. Being part of an engineering company here in Colorado, we hire engineers and designers that were born, raised, and educated in this state. CU Boulder and Colorado School of Mines, two of the best engineering schools in the country. And we elevate, in the business, we elevate above emotion and anecdotal data and let past performance pragmatism and empirical data drive all of our decisions. What I'm here to tell you about today is the facilities that our company designs are the safest and cleanest in the entire world. Colorado leads the charge in oil and gas infrastructure design and construction. And we do that because we've happily engaged with communities to find the best solutions. Got a complex mix of variables here in this state between landowners, mineral owners, environmental folks. And we want to engage all parties as an engineering company to find a solution that meets all those needs. So my purpose here today is to invite anybody in this room, whether you're for oil and gas or against it. I open the doors of my engineering company down in Inglewood to anyone here. If you'd like to learn more about how Colorado citizens design these facilities and do it the best in the world, happy to walk you through the office and have you meet some of those people. It's really cool stuff what we're doing. Nothing to be afraid of. When you're educated about it and understand it, you'll understand that we too are environmentalists, that we want clean air and water. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Greg Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Greg Campbell. I live at 1328 709th Place, Commerce City. Here tonight, you'll get a lot of different facts and details and numbers about oil and gas. You know, you'll see a lot of arguments for and against it. One of the items, pulling just today from Colorado.gov and Census.gov, just some interesting statistics I wanted to share. Nearly three-quarters of all Colorado homes use natural gas for heat. Another three-quarters use fossil fuels for the creation of electricity, 23% of that being just natural gas. So when you put that to numbers based on the census, you have 4.3 million people have natural gas in their home. And 4.3 million people use electricity formed by oil and gas. So when I say I'm energy proud, I'm proud of the US and what we've done in Colorado, specifically Commerce City, with the infrastructure that we already have in place. You know, you go in, you turn a light switch on, the light turns on. You get out from a cold day, you want a hot shower, your heater works. I mean, the standard heat throughout the winter. So, you know, every single year, my wife and I make a conscious effort to visit different countries, at least one per year. And seeing how good we have it here in Colorado, I think where a lot of people take it for granted. We moved to Commerce City about three, three and a half years ago for the potential that this city brought. You know, when I first moved to Colorado in 2000, not knowing the different suburbs of the cities, Commerce City didn't have the same sort of appeal that it does today. And people now are proud to say, yes, I live in Commerce City. Walking through the neighborhood during the last elections, I've learned that probably 90% of my neighbors are somehow involved in the oil and gas community. And so really what I'm trying to focus on, you know, the local supply here really means lower costs for everybody. We start doing moratoriums, or we start looking at trying to delay or bans or anything of the sort, you're now starting to put a possible stranglehold on the supply. And simple economics will say that's not going to be good for the average household. So appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Fio.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Ford. My name is Ryan Fio. I live at 12534 Walden Street, Commerce City. My family has resided in Commerce City since the early 60s and the larger our family grows, the more and more of us that are here. I wanted to say thank you for everything you guys are doing, and gals, in this, what used to be considered a small community into a great city that it is today. The White and Highway 2, Tower Road, On Ramp at Pena, New Rec Centers, the list goes on and on and on. Thank you for that. Also, the attracting of the new companies and businesses into this community is a great thing. I also wanted to say that I hope you will continue to support the oil and gas industry with any and all future projects here in Commerce City and any of the surrounding areas. As you well know, that the gas industry supply or provides thousands and thousands of jobs for the Commerce City residents, which leads to taxes, their money's going into everything in this city, which also helps people own local businesses, stores. Anything that their money goes into supports everything that this Commerce City stands for. My family and I support oil and gas, industry 100%, fracking, extraction, pipelines, anything that goes along with it. And I hope that you guys will too. And I just wanted to say thank you for your time and have a wonderful weekend.
Thank you. Danielle Rinshaw. Danielle Rinshaw.
Been dealing with that since elementary school. It's fine. Good evening, my name's Dana Rinshaw. I live at 13865 Trent Street, formerly 1578 East 97th Place. I'm here today in order to voice opinion for my support for the benefits that Colorado oil and gas bring to their communities. Everyone in this room is passionate about the results of these meetings. And I, for one, am grateful for that passion. As a Marine Corps infantryman, Purple Heart recipient, I greatly appreciate the act of standing up and fighting to protect what you believe in. Everyone in this room here today is spending time in order to do that. I appreciate it, even if I don't agree with everybody. I don't believe anyone in this room wishes ill on anyone else in this room, regardless of the side that they defend. We've all, and will continue to hear from both sides, facts and opinions regarding benefits of the detriments of oil and gas operations in this community. You have the unenviable, yet tremendous responsibility of not figuring out which answer may be wholly and completely right or wrong. Instead, you have to figure out which answer is the most right, given the needs of the community. I am no longer an oil and gas worker. In fact, I am a financial advisor, but as a former oil and gas worker, I have found my niche inside the oil and gas sector. And many of my clients have a very similar or the same story. We're here in Colorado, realize the importance of being paid a fair and livable wage. It's really hard to do that here. We have the fourth highest household rate in the entire country. So we also want socioeconomic equality, but there's not a lot of steps we can actually take to do that. Hopefully, I can tell one quick story that will illustrate how oil and gas does help that. One of my clients was born to parents that both failed to graduate high school. The client was driven to work hard. He was driven, he worked hard, he got accepted into CU Boulder. He wanted to be a doctor. After one year, he couldn't pay the tuition, his parents couldn't help him, and $80,000 in debt seemed unreconcilable. So he dropped out with the $15,000 in debt he had already accumulated. Everybody knows somebody with that similar story. Okay? He got a job to bartend to pass the time, but eventually he met a woman and they end up getting married. Before long, the incident stopped meeting and he had to figure something else out. He went to the oil fields and now he's advanced to regional position. He owns a nice house and he's growing a college fund for his five children. Having that oil and gas job did not just raise one individual above poverty. An individual that didn't have a college education, an individual that had no economic benefit whatsoever. It raised him and it gave his five children an opportunity to raise above the situation that their father was in. Again, that's not a unique story. That's amongst dozens or maybe even more than that of my clients. So I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jim Cashero.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity. I spent 39 years in the oil and gas business. I started out driving a truck with no college degree, I might add, for a company, little company called Pennzoil, and they sold out to Shell. And I ended up with Shell at the last job that I had. I was a corporate trainer for them. I would live at 10299 Sedalia Street in Commerce City. And I just want to say, I want to speak to the safety issue because at Shell, they had such an emphasis on that, that I think it's significant to bring that out. Every year, since I had a company vehicle, I was required to go through a safety regime with that company vehicle to understand how to drive. It was called Smith Driving. We use the Smith Driving rules in Shell. If you got a ticket, you could be fired from Shell. You could be terminated. And some were, as a result of just a simple ticket, a simple speeding violation. If you caused an accident, once again, it was a termination offense. I can tell you that dealing with distributors, as I did in one of my previous jobs, we had 1,100-page manual to deal with bulk motor oil, to make absolutely sure that the integrity was there and the safety was there, each distributorship. We did that once a year. We did an audit and sometimes twice a year. They were required to hold six months' worth of samples upon receiving those samples in rail cars and/or by other means. These are the kind of measures we took just on the downstream. That's a 500-degree flashpoint product. Imagine the kind of emphasis we have at the wellhead, where we have a much more precarious situation, admittedly on occasion, right? And so I can tell you that the last thing that anyone in the oil business wants is any kind of accident. And they'll do everything they can to avoid it and usually, in almost every instance, well above and beyond any requirements by the local, state, or city governments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Austin Rollson.
My name is Austin Rollson. I live at 7095 Pontiac Street. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight on the Regional Arbor Agreement. After reading the agreement, I was very pleased with the many steps that the agreement took, not only to bring more energy development to our area, but also in safety steps it took. I'd like to applaud the commitment to safety and energy development of our council, as well as extraction oil and gas, over this year-long process of negotiating this agreement. And thank you for considering it and allowing community outreach and community support to come out and to comment on the agreement.
Thank you. Commerce City Historical Society.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
We are bringing you a present tonight. It's been a year that we have put our project for our historical card deck display in order. And we just got our cards about a month ago. And it took a year to do this, so it was a long project. But you were sponsors of some of the cards and we are giving the sponsors a free deck of cards. And so we hope that you enjoy them. And if you'd like to buy more, they're $10 a deck. And our purpose of doing this, of course, is to raise money so that we can pay our operating supplies at the museum. And so Esther and Sheila are going to hand the cards out.
Thank you.
So these are all historic pictures on the cards. Whoever sponsored the card could select the picture that they wanted. And we actually got 52 people to sponsor the deck. So it was a great project. We hope that it does what we want it to do and we hope you enjoy the cards. And thank you for your support for the Historical Society.
Thank you. And I'm glad to see, you know, the Historical Society comes in and asks for help on occasion. And it's good to see you come in with a fundraising opportunity to help start raising some money for the Historical Society. So thank you for that and all the hard work. Keep it up and go out and sell a bunch of cards and to the audience, you may not play poker, but support the local Historical Society by buying a deck of cards.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ladies. Oh, nice. All righty. Thank you very much for coming in. We'll all try to sell a little, a few packs of cards.
Okay, thanks.
Oscar.
Can you let everyone know where they can get one of these decks?
We are selling them at the museum and all the board members have them. So we're open from Monday through Saturday, from 10 to 2, and they're for sale there.
Thank you.
Or call me. I'll deliver.
Lucy Molina.
Lucy Molina, I'm at 6650 Clermont, Commerce City. Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank you again, everyone, for your services. God bless you all. And I would like to also thank you for the, I was part of the oil and gas focus group, which is why I'm here today. And I'm going to quickly read just the amendment that you guys gave us, well, a few months ago. So it says, "Resolution Establishing Temporary Oil and Gas Focus Group. Whereas the City of Commerce City, City recognizes the voice of its citizens on the issues related to oil and gas development and believes public involvement is analyzing the pressing issue related to such development. Will assist the city council and city staff in identifying opportunities for improvement of its response to such development and will aid in aligning the development of policy with citizen expectations. Whereas the city has dedicated substantial resources to develop responsible and proactive approach to oil and gas development, including the provisions of multiple avenues for public input and public education, consultations with experts, engagement with partner, state, and local agencies, and the development of positive working relationships with potential developers. Whereas the city council recognizes that there are more opportunities to improve on its approach to oil and gas developments and to influence policy in the state and wishes to obtain focused community input on matters relating to oil and gas development as specified in its resolution." So this is, you guys probably already know it, you guys wrote it. So I'm part of this focus group and I just wanted, again, to, I kind of went a little bit over some, I saw some of the things, not all of our information was included. So I wanted to see, I know we have that 21-day, the 21-day public comments. I want to just ask you all to be, please be respectful for our time. You know, some of us, like, I'm not here as an activist. I'm not here as a paid employee. As you all know, I'm here as a resident, a concerned mother of two children that have issues, health issues, because where I live at. So please be respectful for our time. And every individual that was part of that group, we came to realize that we have so much more in common than we thought. And it was great to be part of it. So again, I would like to ask the city council to be respectful of our thoughts and the energy and the time that we put into this focus group and respect all the information that was given thoroughly. Because some of the information that I saw, I mean, I might be ignorant in this industry, but I'm, you know, I'm not stupid. So I'm also bilingual and please, again, please respect the time of the citizens and the resolution that you wrote. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Susan Noble.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Susan Noble, 10642 O'Leary Street in Reunion. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I would especially like to invite you on behalf of North Range Concerned Citizens to an important community forum on Friday night. There has been a lot of questions and misinformation about what is allowed and what isn't allowed under SB 181 and the law that was signed by Governor Polis. So we have invited State Senator Mike Foot to come speak to the community on Friday night. Senator Foot was co-author and co-sponsor of 181 and he will be taking questions and providing answers to the community and hopefully the city council will attend as well. You'll receive a more formal invitation tomorrow, so thank you very much. I would like to say that, among other things, you do have power. You have land use authority. You have zoning and enforcement authority. And these drafts that have been put online read as if they were written and edited before 181 became law. There are opportunities that the regional operators agreement misses. For example, you're asking for extraction to self-audit. We think there's a better way. You're suggesting economically practicable. You're suggesting economic hardship. You're talking about economically feasible. You're talking about all the things that 181 struck from the COGCC and they're in your regional operators agreement draft. There is also a portion to the draft that says that you shall not protest or request a hearing or oppose or object, and that's in perpetuity. So let's say in November, the city council changes. Or let's say in two years, the city council changes. Their hands are tied. I don't think that that's what you're looking for on behalf of this city and on behalf of your constituents. There's also a force majeure. That's 15.19. I don't think you want a force majeure in this as well. Plus, they snuck in a little item about water. You have the idea that you're going to have water pipelines. Only problem is, their water pipelines begin during completion, not during drilling. You will have water trucks during drilling because they need water for cement to do the casing. I do want to bring something important to your attention. Today, Extraction Oil and Gas received a notice of potential breach of the amended and restated operator agreement and violation of the comprehensive drilling plan from the city and county of Broomfield. That is because they appear to be in violation of their agreement. There is concern that this has been ongoing with extraction since they began with the interchange B pad. Thank you very much for your time.
Don Cuevo.
Good evening, council. My name is Sean Cuevo. I live in Villages of Buffalo Run. Asbestos is a really good insulator. It's really cheap, it's really light, you can stick it into a building and you've got great insulation at low cost. But we found out later that it's dangerous to our health. Lead is also an incredible ingredient for so many things. You put it into paint and it lasts longer, you need less paint, but it turns out there were consequences with paint. But it turns out there are consequences with paint as well. We banned the use of asbestos in lead and paint, or, you know, asbestos, not asbestos insulation, I mean asbestos insulation. And the reason we do so is because as time goes on, we learn more, and regulation evolves to keep up with what we've learned. Just recently, Senate Bill 181 has finally allowed us to prioritize health, welfare, health, safety, and welfare when it comes to regulating the industry. And we ask that you do so, so that we can keep up with what we have learned about oil and gas operations. The air quality in Commerce City is consistently poor quality. And adding drilling and the flaring that will come along with it will only contribute to that. I have, I actually have an inhaler now, because I suddenly have asthma in the last few months. It's something that I've only found to happen here. I never had asthma as an adult until I moved to Commerce City. And so what I'm asking you is, Senate Bill 181, was said by the COGCC to be a brand-new world of how we regulate and how we approach this. Any Regional Operator Agreement can't possibly take into account those changes because those changes haven't been agreed upon yet, haven't been decided. We don't know what we can or can't do when it comes to regulating the industry. And it would be remiss of us to act quickly before those decisions are made. So I'm asking you to place a moratorium on any new oil and gas operations until that rulemaking can be completed. This will change the landscape, literally, of Commerce City for decades to come. It deserves the time and attention to do, to wait for these decisions to be made, to know what we can do to protect ourselves. And lastly, I would like to stress that using a Regional Operator's Agreement, I don't think is ideal for us, because, one, it only covers one company, one company, Extraction, who has not even gotten approval for their applications for the spacing units. So it may not even be the company that ends up drilling here. I urge you to pass ordinance instead, so that we can establish a ground, a base of rules, or what it takes to work in our city to protect us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Russ Waterson.
Honorable Mayor, honorable members of the city council. My name is Russ Waterson. I own a home at 11259 Kalasfeld Street in Buffalo Run in Commerce City. I'm the president of the Buffalo Homeowners Association. There are 556 individual mineral owners within the Buffalo Run section. Those rights are owned by many of your fellow citizens in Buffalo Run and other subdivisions. The economic benefits of oil and gas development are over $200 million to Commerce City and Adams County and local districts, road impact fees, and the sharing of state K through 12 districts of an additional $137 million. Also, we're aware that Suncor, Commerce City's refinery, is the largest single taxpayer in the city and hub of every pipeline in the entire region. The drill site for the wells that go underneath Buffalo Run is two to three miles away from Buffalo Run, and not within a mile of any Commerce City residents. We know that the statewide vote last November concerning oil and gas restrictions ended in a 59% vote against and 41% for Proposition 112. An Adams County clerk reports that not a single of Commerce City's 34 precincts voted for Proposition 112. The citizen voted emphatically on this issue. The 2019 release from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment shows that oil and gas operations are, by comparison, quite safe. The period of 2016-17 showed 158 occupational deaths. Mining, quarrying, and oil and gas combined recorded only 16 of those deaths, while government workers recorded 15. The same department, under Section 2 of its 2017 study of 12 epidemiological and 27 different health effects, called "The Systematic Review of Human Health Effects of People Living Near Oil and Gas Operations", a part of its conclusions stated, "Based on currently available air monitoring data, the risk of harmful health effects is low for residents living near oil and gas operations. And at this time, results from exposure and health effects studies do not indicate the need for immediate public health action." An article in the ColoradoPolitics.com dated December 4, 2017, stated, "Data released by the EIA, U.S. Energy Information Agency, over the last two years show that CO2 emissions have been steadily declining, and is at their lowest point in 30 years, in nearly 30 years. Decrease is by virtue of coal-fired plants being replaced by gas-fired ones." Last Friday. Thank you for your time, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Rome Sanchez.
Hi, my name's Rhona Sanchez, and I live at 10680 Waco Street. And Lisa Grunwald de Mucio was unable to attend, and so I'm reading this letter on her behalf. I have worked in the oil and gas industry here in Denver from 1978 to 2001. I've held some of the following positions throughout my career with various oil companies, including controller, internal and external auditor, forensic accountant, and responsible for setting up remote operations in Alaska, Ireland, and the UK. With that being said, I would like to take this opportunity to point out my opposition to Article 9, Paragraph 9.1, that appears in the current draft of the Operator's Agreement. Why would Commerce City add and agree to a clause that gives up their rights? That clause, let's see, that clause right there will tie the hands of Commerce City and be used by the oil companies any time an issue arises regarding bad behavior by these companies going forward. Trust me, these oil companies will use this exact clause to legally silence the city's objections in the future, and their lawyers will tie up any objections in the future claiming this clause could be open to interpretation when engaged in a legal battle. I guarantee this clause was demanded by the oil companies just for that purpose. I know because when I worked in the industry, we used variations on that same language to allow us to financially tie the hands of municipalities. Knowing that most cities, counties, et cetera, do not have the resources to get involved in lengthy and expensive litigation, that type of clause alone allowed us carte blanche. I put forth that if the oil and gas companies are genuinely trustworthy and honest, there would be no need to have a clause that would protect them from anyone's right to protest anything. With this clause, they're even removing your right to even hold a hearing. This alone removes your right and the right of every citizen in Commerce City to speak up. Agreeing is something that removes a constitutional right, would open up the city to lawsuits regarding the violation of that right. I respectfully ask that Commerce City remove that clause. If the oil and gas companies fully intend to abide by the rules, then I do not see the reason for including that. Also, I guess I learned tonight that a lot of people moved here because of oil and gas, and apparently, I'm one of the few that moved here because I didn't, I thought there wasn't going to be oil and gas. I moved here from Greeley to get away from it for health and safety reasons. And when I, when we were looking at houses, all I could see were parks, the swimming pool, the rec center, and a beautiful place to have a home. And I was utterly shocked when I found out that this was the plan for Commerce City. I didn't realize I was moving into north, south Greeley. So, thank you.
Guillermo Cerna.
Guillermo Cerna, 14122 East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado. I'm here to appeal probably to six of you. In perspective, Mr. Moore, I know where you live in perspective to the needs of this community. It's not easy living in that arena. Ma'am, you represent the mothers of children that do not want oil next to schools or underneath their homes, protection and safety. Sir, you took an oath to help the people that are not here in this, because they're working or whatever, and did not get enough information, and haven't gotten enough information. Mr. Teeter, you know what the forefathers of this city wanted to do. And that's create a city that had dignity in perspective to its community. They wanted to stop Denver from growing. Mayor, by your own words in a study session recently, you said that the earth needs help. I don't know if it was facetious, but knowing you, I'm hoping that you take a look at that and the integrity of the family that helped build this city. Mr. Douglas, thank you for your kind words in perspective to a moratorium, because we need to take the time of the empowerment that has been given to you to represent us that cannot speak as elegantly as some of the professionals here. Sir, your service to this country in perspective, you also took an oath, and I see you working towards it in perspective by asking the right questions. Sir, less than six months, you should keep yourself out of the vote just because you do not know the history of this city. And I think that you should, because you do not know. Office of whatever you're going to be working with, or wherever you came from, in California, to work here, okay? Take a look at the city and what it needs to finish. Thank you so much for your concern for our community, and thank you again. So with that, I leave you with that, and I ask an appeal to give us a moratorium, because as far as Brighton, you only got half the story. As far as the arsenal, it was 1. some million, billion dollars to clean it. Okay, thank you.
Judy Doris. No, you can't. You can come up and speak yourself, though.
Hello, I'm Judy Doris. I live at 11882 Chambers Drive, Commerce City, Colorado. You know, I never thought I'd be up in front of people, especially city council, voicing my concerns. When I grew up, you didn't have to beg people to see the right and not have to go through all this rigmarole to make your point across. I'm saddened to feel the way I do. The city, I feel, had no intentions from the beginning to help the community. They always kind of leaned toward the oil and gas. A lot of you guys teeter totter and are very transparent. And I don't think that's fair to the community. You guys mentioned you were afraid of lawsuits. Well, you know what? This may end up a lawsuit, because nobody is looking what the community wants. People are afraid for their health, their kids' health. We don't want all these oil wells, and we'll end up turning and looking like old Commerce City. We don't need that here. And somebody needs to stand up and get a set, if you know what I mean, and say, "No, we are going to follow the law to the T." We are going to wait till 181 is completely printed out, and everybody follows it. This new thing now, giving up rights and stuff, are we just calling under a rug and letting oil and gas take over our lives? It seems like everybody's shoving oil and gas, oil and gas down people's throats. Nobody's listened to the homeowner. Your taxes aren't going to go down, the metro district isn't going to go down, our schools aren't going to get that much money as people think. Homeowners aren't going to get $14,000 for their mineral rights, at the most maybe six. So what are we, as homeowners, getting from these oil companies other than more traffic, more noise, more dust, chances of sickness? There's not much worry that you can say regarding that. People invested their hard-earned money to come to Commerce City, and they didn't think they were there going to have to fight with oil fields. That wasn't something in there. If you go to most of these local builders, they won't even tell you if they're fracking. They all go, "Shh, well, we don't know nothing about it, full hockey." People know about it, the builders know about it. And they're throwing their potential customers under the rug for the point of selling their properties, even though oil and gas is being dug right outside these people's houses. I'm just so disappointed, and I never thought in my 60 years that I'd have to stand up and say, "Come on, guys, pay attention, listen, look, before you do something dumb, because this is going to be something you can cover up." You can cover up the storage unit, you guys, okay, but you can't cover up oil and gas errors. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris McGowan.
Sorry, just this for a minute. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of city council.
Good evening.
My name is Chris McGowan, and I'm Associate Director for the Colorado Petroleum Council. CPC is a division of the American Petroleum Institute, and we represent all facets of the oil and natural gas industry here in Colorado. We truly appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to comment. I'm here today to express our strong support for the Operator Agreement that's under discussion by the public and up for comment here in Commerce City. It is the culmination of months of hard work between this operator and the city, and we are extremely hopeful that you will look and view this document favorably. CPC and its member companies have always, in the past, enjoyed a very positive, collaborative, and engaging relationship with Commerce City. Our organization and its members have always taken a pragmatic and proactive, problem-solving approach to development within the city, and we are very proud of our members and their engagement with the broader Commerce City community. The city has several times over the past few years expressed its desire to utilize operator agreements and has shown support for the heightened development standards contained within this contract. Our operators have come to the table time after time to work out siting concerns, development issues, and create a standard that by any measure is one of the strongest in the state, if not the country. Indeed, the city has acknowledged that the standards contained within this proposed operator agreement exceed any regulatory scheme that the city currently has or is looking to create, and provides many strong protections for the health, safety, and welfare of these constituents. Thus, today, we hope you send a signal to our members as well as the broader business community at large. Commerce City is a city of its word, it is open for business, and is willing to work in good faith with any business that is looking to contribute to the health and well-being of the community at large. Thanks, have a great evening.
Thank you. Kip Shirodis. Good evening, Kip.
Good evening, my name is Kip Shirodis, 2648 Bel Air Street. I do not wish to talk about oil and gas, I digress. Let's talk about the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. I'm a board member of that organization. We are the nonprofit support to fishing wildlife activities on the refuge, both financial and political. We find money to pay for school buses that brings kids to the refuge. We find money to buy new binoculars, new archery sets, new picnic tables, new shade for refuge visitors. There are, by the way, 35,000 visitors to the refuge per month, per month. That's an astounding number in the refuge system around the country. You guys, as economic development people, ought to keep that in mind. 35,000 people go through our gate every month, and you can capture them once they leave. 200 head of bison are out there, probably more as we speak. It's calving season now. I'm here simply to give you in two minutes and one second just some quick I'm here simply to give you in two minutes and one second just some quick updates on the refuge and some upcoming events. Number one, we are the fiscal agent for the Go Wild Go Co grant. It's run through you guys. You'll be happy to know that our books are in good order. Your CPAs are smiling, our CPAs will be smiling, but our financial records are in good order for that second year of that Go Co grant. We are also the recipient of a Commerce City grant of last year, the Pollinator Trailer, a trailer meant to send to go out to schools in Commerce City, teaching kids about pollination, gardens, that kind of thing. It was widely successful last school season. We're signing up schools in the Commerce City area for this coming school season. So thank you once again for that Pollinator Trailer. Upcoming events, September 14th, Saturday, September 14th, is our annual dinner. It's our major fundraiser. You people in Commerce City have been gracious with your sponsorship. You're all invited once again. Tuesday, September 17th, we're holding a free public meeting in Stapleton's Northfield neighborhood in the shopping area, the past, present, and future of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, specifically for those new residents. If you've seen those houses budding up against the the refuge fence, it's just now amazing. They need to understand what they live next to and the the assets and and the risks. They may wind up losing Fifi in the backyard someday. You just don't know. But really, what's exciting is October 8th, the North American Association of the Society of Foreign Environmental Journalists. They're taking a tour of the refuge to see what a success story that is. I'm leading the tour. I'm the historian on that tour, and I will tell them plenty about the fantastic role Commerce City played. Thank you.
Thanks, Kip. That takes us through our list. Is there anyone in the audience who did not get a chance to sign up that would like to speak? Come on up. Give your name and address for the record.
Ron Bruce, 15800 East 121st Avenue. Mr. Mayor, council, I took this weekend to go through the regional operator agreement. And I'll take exception to one of the previous speakers. I don't think this is the strongest path for us to take. This was presented by Chris Kramer when he first gave you the rundown on SB 181. And one of the options he gave you was to codify what you're going to go to do. That was also brought up during the focus group. I felt I was on the sidelines, but I felt that was shoveled to the side. We just learned from the Adams County Commissioner today that they took their time with this moratorium, and they're going to codify their new regulations. They used to have MOUs. They're not going to do that any longer, and they're not going to do a regional operator agreement. They're going to codify it. So if you're really interested in making this strong and strongly legal, I suggest we go codify all the BMPs. This shouldn't be into a contractual agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who did not get a chance to speak that wishes to? Come on up. Need your name and address for the record.
John Pointon, 1217 Venice Street in Longmont, Colorado. Honorable Mayor, council members, on August 2nd, Friday, August 2nd, at 7:30 in the morning, we'll be welcoming about 1,000 employees back to the Adams 14 School District for our annual Welcome Back Rally. And we want you to know that you're warmly invited to join us on that that morning. We'll have a little breakfast, and we'll we'll hear from lots of our teachers and staff that are coming back to kick off another great year at Adams 14. And if you have time on your busy schedules, we would love to have you, and we're grateful for all that you do on behalf of our students and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who did not get a chance to sign up for citizen communication? Saying none, that will end our citizen communication portion of the meeting. However, I think it is important to mention that tonight, as many nights, I noticed that there was a lot of discussion for and against oil and gas. We have the study session. We have a lot of people come in and and speak in favor of or in opposition to oil and gas. But by the time we get to the portion of the meeting where we have our oil and gas update, everybody's gone. Then I hear in the community that nobody has any clue what's going on with oil and gas. So I would implore you, if you want to hear about the oil and gas update, it is forthcoming in the meeting, and we'd ask you to stay to hear the report on oil and gas from our staff. And thank you. Next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for a further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are seven items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council desire to remove an item off of the consent agenda? Saying no one, I'm open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilwoman Frank.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the attorney walk us through the seven items?
The minutes of June 17, 2019, the minutes of July 1, 2019, ordinance 2225, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Tony Graham Society's services grant funds in the amount of $57,807 for the support of Youth Epic Program and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2226, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Walmart Community Foundation grant in the amount of $4,000 to be used for public safety and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2227, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant Funds in the amount of $750,000 for the Veterans Memorial Park renovation project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Resolution 2019-69, resolution finding substantial compliance of annexation petitions in cases AN 25319 and AN 25419, known as the Third Creek West annexations, and setting a public hearing to determine eligibility for such annexations. Resolution 2019-78, resolution appointing members to designated boards and commissions of Commerce City.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Titles have all been read, and I'll ask for a roll call vote. We'll move into ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 2232, C.DUI enforcement grant. Does anyone on the council have any questions regarding the ordinance? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? Saying none. I'm open for a motion. Councilwoman Frank.
I motion to introduce ordinance 2232 by council as seated and approve on the first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Huesman.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2232, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation grant in the amount of $18,000 for DUI enforcement efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by council? Saying none. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2232 is approved unanimously by the city council on first reading. Next item is ordinance 2233, the Ralston House contribution. Does anyone on council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? Saying none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter.
I make a motion to introduce ordinance 2233 by council as seated and approve the ordinance on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Ordinance 2233, will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2233, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the funds returned from the City of North Glenn in the amount of $27,678 to be used as a contribution to Ralston House and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Any discussion? Saying no one, I do have a comment for those that are in the audience or watching at home. We are one of many communities that donated money to help build the Ralston House. This is our share of the pot that was left over and unused. All of the other cities, or the majority of the other cities, have donated their money back for the Ralston House to be able to use that money towards utilities and other things to get started. So Commerce City City Council has deemed it necessary to follow suit with some of the other participating cities and do the same. That's the purpose of this ordinance. All right, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2233 is introduced unanimously by the council this evening. Takes us into our administrative business portion of the meeting. I'd like to ask Mr. McBroom to discuss the letter of support for the STEED School.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. You should have a copy of that letter in front of you. As you may be aware, as part of the reunion sports and entertainment district, Oakwood is desiring to build a charter school as part of that campus. The charter school would be focused on agribusiness, and it is their intent to have the school chartered through the 27J School District Board of Education. Oakwood has asked us to write a letter of support. It's my understanding in talking to Dr. Fidler, the superintendent of 27J, about this charter school, though at least at this point in time, it seems to have the support of the 27J Board of Education. But nonetheless, Oakwood has asked the city to write this letter of support, and to send the letter, council must authorize the mayor's signature.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a motion to allow my signature to go on the letter that's before you all? Mr. Davis.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to allow your signature go on the letter authored by Chris Fidler, Superintendent, 27J.
Thank you. Mr. Huesman.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second for me to be able to sign the letter to Mr. Chris Fidler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'm open to the council for any additional administrative council business. Mr. Davis? No, your light's still on. Mr. Huesman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we invite the members of the oil and gas focus group back to have a meeting where they can discuss and debate and provide direct input on the regional operator agreement. My understanding is that although there was conversation about it, their input, they don't feel their input was included in the actual agreement. So I'd like to invite them to come back and have that meeting so that the members of the focus group have that opportunity to provide that direct input.
I have a motion on the floor of several people that have their lights lit up for administrative council business. If you wish to second the motion, please raise your hand. Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Huesman, you want to restate your motion?
Invite the members of the oil and gas focus group back to be able to provide comment and direct input on the regional operator agreement as it was presented.
Mayor Ford?
Yes, sir.
If I might ask a question, the current 21-day comment period is due to end before the next regular city council meeting. Certainly, that doesn't mean the opportunity to provide comment ends. But it would be helpful to know from city council, would you like to have that at a study session or a special study session or as part of a regular meeting?
I want to have some discussion because my concern with it is that we have a 21-day comment period that's open right now. I think any anyone that wishes to comment on that operator's agreement has the right to do so. And I I hope that they do comment, whether they're for or against it. It's the whole purpose of having the comment period. I don't understand the purpose of having the additional information when it can be given through comment through our process today. Any other discussion? Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Yes, I know the 21-day comment period, we do have the option to extend in that period as well. And so because right now, I believe it's supposed to end on July 30th, is that correct? Or 29th?
I believe it's the 29th.
29th. I'd be up to extend it till August 5th.
I have a motion on the floor we have to deal with first. I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Do you have discussion, Mr. Huesman? Mr. Huesman.
So I don't think that the comment period needs to be extended for that. Today's the 15th. The the comment period goes through the 29th. That's two weeks. Should the members of the oil and gas focus group have the desire to come in and sit down and as a group discuss their potential input to the ROA because it was not included in the draft ROA that went out, then I think that that meeting could take place next week, and those comments could be officially joined as part of the comments that come through. Yes, they do have the right individually to comment. However, as a group, I see value of bringing in both sides of the conversation and having that conversation on what inputs they feel they want to do together as a group.
Mr. McBroom.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Huesman. I think I misunderstood your initial motion. The motion is not to have the focus group meet with the city council, but to meet with staff and provide more direct feedback on the ROA. Understood, we can we can easily do that.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. You helped me as well. All right. Any other discussion?
Mayor Ford.
Yes, sir.
If I may just note, the original resolution, obviously, the focus group has expired, but I believe council could do this simply by motion with the existing members, but subject to the same rules would be how I would, if asked to advise staff on how the focus group would operate, it would be in the same way. And I just want to make sure that that was correct.
I'll ask the motion maker.
Yes, same members, should they wish to participate.
Is that acceptable to the second?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Saying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right, Mr. Douglas.
No, thank you. There are some, well, there are concerned citizens about the truck traffic on 96, and I know I posed that question to you, city manager, and I know it's going to be put into the maintenance schedule. And when is, when will that be taken care of as far as 96, as far as those cracks along the road?
I don't know the exact date that that work's going to occur. We could certainly get a specific date or a timeframe and share that with council.
Okay. And then I know we just had, just in the last week, I just saw over the weekend, too, some infrastructure being along, being put in along Quebec. I think it's the same company that was doing work on the corner of Quebec and Highway 2. And we can get an update on that as well as far as what are they doing inside of our city borders. So a lot of people are asking what exactly is going on. I know they're doing some boring and all that, whether it's for wiring or whatever it may be, that would be nice.
I understand it's a contractor doing work on behalf of Comcast, but we'd be happy to share a copy of their permit with city council.
All right, appreciate that. And people are asking about, you know, fireworks that got canceled, and any word on an August or September that date has been reached yet?
There are two dates being contemplated. One was to reschedule a smaller firework show that the Rapids folk... One was to reschedule a smaller fireworks show that the Rapids folks were going to do before, I'm sorry, after a game that occurred before July 4th and a rescheduled date for the July 4th fireworks. I understand there's a date in August and a date in September. I don't know that those have been finalized yet. As soon as they are, we'll be sure to share that with city council and with the Commerce City community.
Okay. As far as contributions for the fireworks, is that all on the Conkey? As far as Rapids, is that a combination of the city and the Rapids?
The smaller fireworks show that occurred, that was to occur after a game in June was all at the Rapids' expense. The July 4th fireworks are split 50-50 with the city and the Colorado Rapids.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any additional administrative council business from council this evening? Saying no, we'll move into the administrative, or the oil and gas update. I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it is the third Monday of the month, which means it is time for our monthly oil and gas update. We always start these off with a little discussion about any permits, individual oil and gas permits. And this month, more than most, we need to clarify the difference between an oil and gas permit and any other type of applications to the city. We'll get into the regional operating agreement that's been discussed at length tonight a little bit later in this presentation. But this slide is specifically about individual oil and gas well pad applications. And to date, the city has not received any of those specific permit applications. And as consistently from before, this is, remains unchanged. All two As and twos have been requested to be on hold with the COGCC, and that remains unchanged. The state permits, the spacing applications, the Form twos, which are well bore applications, and the Form two As, which are well pad applications, those remain unchanged since last month. And staff is not aware of any changes to those particular applications at the state. That means that the map of the COGCC activity also remains unchanged. I should note for council, there is, in the regional operating agreement that is now for public, up for public comment, there is an additional map in that as one of the exhibits that shows well pad applications that don't necessarily correspond to this map. Those two maps show two different things. This is showing those applications for this, at the state level. The exhibit in the regional operating agreement is a map showing contemplated well pad locations as a part of the regional operating agreement. So those don't necessarily sync up perfectly, so I wanted to make sure council was aware of that change. As far as big picture or general overview updates, the final oil and gas focus group meeting was held on June 26th. I will get into more details about that, those series of meetings, in just a moment. The oil and gas impact fee was passed on first reading by city council on July 1st. So hopefully, council remembers that fondly, and its second reading is coming up shortly. Staff also had the opportunity to meet with the new COGCC director, Jeff Robbins, on July 10th, discuss a variety of issues, including the status of state permits and how those would interact with local processes and permits, and then asking a lot of questions about how 181 would be implemented, rulemaking, et cetera. Thus, staff also had a chance to attend a local government-designee roundtable in Broomfield on July 12th, and there was a wide variety of topics discussed there. And I believe there's discussions about maybe possibly having some more of those in the future. As we, the next part of this presentation, we will get into the, just a little bit about the regional operating agreement and the process that we're in right now. To help set the table for that, thought it would be good to discuss a little bit of how we got here with the regional operating agreement. So it seems like a long time ago, I know for some certainly more than others, but in March of 2018 is when oil and gas became an issue for Commerce City. And that's when extraction and actually other operators began to approach Commerce City about proposed facilities. Shortly thereafter, permits began to be submitted to the state from three separate operators from April through July. In May of 2018, staff had an executive session with operators to, or, sorry, had an executive session with council regarding operators and how to best handle negotiations with those operators. More formally, one of the three operators was interested in having real discussions in earnest, and that was extraction, oil and gas. That really resulted in ongoing regularly scheduled negotiation meetings with them to try and make a lot of progress regarding additional protections that the city could see from their development. September of 2018, there was an additional executive session with council to reaffirm staff's approach regarding those negotiations. In November of 2018, there were some minor land development code amendments regarding the oil and gas section. They were not the larger, more comprehensive or global oil and gas amendments that we expect to see later this year. These were smaller, more process-oriented amendments. This is where we introduced the ability for a regional operating agreement, for example. There was not really any substantive policy-level amendments included in that. You might remember in December of 2018, at the Bison Ridge Recreation Center, there was an open house, well-attended, approximately 80 people were present for the community meeting to discuss what was really the product of those regularly occurring negotiation sessions I was referring to earlier with extraction. It was a series of stations by both the city and a separate set of stations by extraction outlining the best management practices that were, to date, at that point in December, that were being considered. And that was, since then, while we got a lot of great feedback at the actual community meeting, the best management practices have been up on our website since then, and there's been an opportunity for the public to comment on those throughout since that December open house meeting. Just a little bit more on the background of our timeline. In March of 2019, in a third executive session, really drilling into the details of the regional operating agreement and the approach that staff should use. Beginning in April, there was the Focus Group, and again, I'll get to that in just a moment with some more details. In June of 2019, the oil and gas transportation impact fee that was authorized in our land development code, but that did not have any specifics, that was actually finalized. It was beginning to be finalized in June, where we had an open house with both stakeholders and the community, also at Bison Ridge Recreation Center. And then that obviously has been approved on first reading. So there's a modeling and tremendous amount of review associated with that that is going to result in additional fees that are going to be eligible to be collected related to oil and gas development. July of 2019, that's where we sit today, the regional operating agreement, the 21-day comment period has begun. It started on July 9th, and it is scheduled to end on July 29th per the land development code 21-day comment period. Throughout this process, there have been a lot of other things going on that don't necessarily have a specific date associated with it. Land development code process, a larger-scale land development code amendment process has already been started. The Focus Group is a huge contributor to that process. There's going to be continued efforts on that front, including future community meetings regarding those amendments. There's also been numerous other staff-level meetings with the COGCC, the fire districts, water districts, emergency responders, Adams County, other communities regarding best practices, potential protections, sometimes just sharing ideas about what's working and not working. There's been monthly updates to city council throughout this process. Twelve have been conducted since the May 18th meeting. In addition, there's been the speaker series. You can see some of the speakers that we've had there attempting to come in and help provide a lot of background information, not only to staff, but to city council and the public as well. So all that leads to the regional operating agreement. I do not have tonight for you planned to have the actual framework or a background on the actual regional operating agreement. There is going to be a presentation scheduled for August 5th to lay out that, in addition, including any comments that might have been received. I would suspect that an additional Focus Group meeting that could be held regarding the regional operating agreement, that August 5th meeting would be a great opportunity to pass that input along as well. So this information tonight is really regarding the process. And so the 21-day period starts on the July 9th. We do have hard copies available at the Civic Center, Bison Ridge, Eagle Point. It's obviously online. There's multiple different ways to submit those comments to the Community Development Department. I would encourage the public to do that. I know that sometimes submitting comments to other folks on Facebook or things like that is a habit for some, but for us to have the full effect, it would, it's going to be necessary for folks to submit those to the Community Development Department. Following that 21-day period, staff will have a lot, there'll be a variety of paths that we could take. Obviously, one is to approve the regional operating agreement. Another is to incorporate feedback received and change terms of the regional operating agreement or the best management practices that are, that form really the backbone of the agreement. That's an exhibit to the agreement. Another option is to reopen the public comment period or not approve the regional operating agreement. I want to make sure that this is clear for not only the council, but the public as well. The approval of a regional operating agreement does not provide extraction with development rights or vested rights for an individual well pad site. It provides overall protections that are going to be applicable to every well that they do, but it is not approval to start drilling. Extraction will have to go through a separate individual oil and gas permit for each site. And that process, currently in the land development code, is an administrative process, but there will be a public element to it as well as the regional operating agreement. So there'll be neighborhood meetings, there'll be public comments that are going to be opportunities for the public to provide for that process as well. In addition, extraction is going to be required to provide pipelines to eliminate a lot of the truck traffic that normally accompanies oil and gas development. That is included in the best management practices exhibit, and that requires a conditional use permit. That's a public hearing at city council. And so that's obviously another opportunity for public input. Obviously, there's a lot more steps after this, which means that this is probably not going to be completed anytime in 2019 and is more likely in 2026. Just to give council a heads up, so far since the July 9th go-live for the public comment period, staff has received 21 comments to date. Next, I want to talk for a few minutes about the Focus Group. Council may recall that in April, you authorized this Focus Group to begin operations in Resolution 2019-4. The focus of that was to provide input to staff on legislative matters, which, to Councilman Hughesman's point, did not include the regional operating agreement. It really was intended, and it was very clear in the resolution, that that was for providing input on future LDC changes, for COGCC rulemaking, anything legislatively related to oil and gas. When council originally set up this process, there were three meetings scheduled. And at the request of the Focus Group, two additional meetings were added. So it, the end date was still June 26th, which meant that we actually had to squeeze those additional two meetings within that time period before June 26th. So we had some back-to-back meetings, and I want to say the Focus Group members were extremely patient and really giving of their time, and really should be applauded for their efforts. The discussion really centered around the four areas that you see here, and I'll get into those just a little bit more in just a second. There was a session regarding future COGCC rulemakings and some of the items being considered by the COGCC in the next year. There was also, it was apparent from, I would say, the second meeting that city council certainly picked Focus Group members with a wide range of backgrounds and interests and perspectives. But I, from a staff perspective, I think overall, there was a lot of good discussion, a lot of certainly passionate discussion, but I think it led to, there's obviously times where there was disagreement, but there were times that there was a lot of agreement across the board. So from that perspective, I would say the Focus Group had a lot of success. I do want to outline that council did receive as an attachment to this presentation, there's a summary memo that tried to summarize a little bit about some of the things that were discussed. Obviously, with five meetings each lasting two hours, there was a lot of content. We did also attach the minutes for each one of those. I would request if Focus Group members feel that there is anything that somehow got missed in those, we are certainly open to receiving those and passing those along to council. So it is not our intent to hide or not include any of that information. So it's a lot of reading for you if you're interested, so take a look. Again, there were five main areas, the BMPs section. So the interesting thing about the BMPs was that staff utilized the BMPs that were in the regional operating agreement as a basis for the discussion. While council did not intend for the Focus Group to discuss the regional operating agreement, from staff's perspective, those best management practices certainly are a good place to discuss possible zoning changes. And so there was a lot of potential, or, sorry, there's a lot of topics that were covered related to which ones some of the Focus Group members thought would be beneficial to codify and which ones they didn't feel the need to codify. Obviously, there were members who felt some of those best management practices did not go far enough and that additional protections should be put into the code, while others felt that those best management practices, while they were a good terms to be included in an agreement, didn't necessarily need to go into the code. There's also discussion about zoning, and when we talk about zoning, what we mean is, should the city limit where oil and gas wells should go based on zoning district designation? For example, I-1, I-2, I-3, ag, commercial, R-1, R-2, R-3. This discussion was obviously, I think there was a lot of agreement that locating oil and gas wells near homes and near schools is problematic. How near becomes problematic was obviously an item for discussion. And there was a lot of different views on that type of idea. But I do think that there was a lot of discussion about some sort of setback, possibly being something that city council should consider, something maybe more than what the state currently has at 500 feet from residences. There's a lot of discussion about process. As council knows, currently, regional operating agreements, and more specifically, or importantly, individual oil and gas permits are currently administratively considered and approved. The Focus Group discussed possible changes to that approach, including having council be the final decision-maker on that through a conditional use permit process. As council knows, you are in charge of having a public hearing regarding the pipeline, and there was some discussion that council would be the best candidate to actually hear individual oil and gas well permits. Again, not everyone thought that was a good idea, but that was certainly expressed by many members of the Focus Group. Enforcement was another provision. This is another one where we looked at the ROA as a starting point to give us ideas to talk about. And, you know, I think there was a lot of interest in making sure that there was good information provided to the public, good information provided to city council regarding what should be included on future updates specifically related to enforcement. Have there been violations? If so, for what? And what type of enforcement action was actually taken? The COGCC rulemaking, I was not present for that particular night, but if there are specific questions beyond what we have here, I can call on Dominic Martinelli, who was present, who can help answer any of those questions. But as I understand it, there's a lot of good discussion about what the city's role should be in those future rulemaking processes. And that, obviously, some members felt that we should be heavily involved, while others felt that if we are involved, not to get too involved on one side or the other of those particular processes. As I mentioned again, we do have a lot of the documents attached to this for your further review. So takeaway is the next steps for the Focus Group. I did not have a chance to add an additional bullet for a, one more Focus Group regarding the regional operating agreement, but we will certainly jump on that and reach out to Focus Group members and see if there's a night that works well for them and have that over the next week or two. It was a great chance for staff to hear from Focus Group members, to hear a wide range of views and opinions. We're still reviewing those, that feedback, especially as it relates to the LDC program. We're still reviewing those, that feedback, especially as it relates to the LDC process. I can tell you, while I'm providing an update to you here tonight, my guess is it will not be the last time you will hear about what was discussed in the focus group. As staff moves into its broader, more intense Land Development Code amendments, there is certainly an expectation that that focus group impact or input will be a part of that process and probably part of what gets provided to you as City Council. So that Land Development Code process is, again, it is not a smaller update, just hitting on a few process items. It's expected to be a larger update, and so it's expected to have study sessions with both Planning Commission and City Council targeted for this fall. So with that, staff is available for any questions you might have.
Does council have any questions for staff concerning the oil and gas update this evening? Seeing none, thank you, Chris.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, you do? Mr. Huesman.
Mr. Kramer, I'd just like to thank you for all your hard work over the last year and a half on this. As you're leaving, I think that it's fitting that we give you the appreciation for trying your best in what is probably a no-win situation, a thankless job, and yet you've tried to do your best in it, and so I really do appreciate your effort. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Huesman. Mr. Mayor, I would like to just take this opportunity, if I could, not only on this topic, but just in general, it has been 19 years that I've been here, and when I started there, 20,000 people, and now there's over 60,000. And there's been days where it felt like we've been personally moving those folks in almost every time. So it's, there are a lot of career highlights I have here that I'll never forget, a lot of relationships, and I've really enjoyed working with council and the public, no matter the issue, no matter how hard it gets sometimes, it's been truly fulfilling, and so I do appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Chris, for the presentation, and just want to say appreciate your service to the city. I know the last couple of years have been, you know, been tough, we've been having some head-on issues that we need to deal with and discuss, and a lot of these things have been, we saw them back in 2011, '12, now they come full circle, and now we're dealing with them a different way we did back in 2012. And so I do appreciate your efforts and seeing this focus group in the way you did. And the question I had too, as far as gathering information, all the different comments, how much time are we anticipating for this to be, to wrap up? Because there's a lot of comments, well, you have 26 now, you know, like a lot of things, when it comes to that deadline, you probably have a lot more come in before the 21-day is over. So what do you see as a time of process?
Certainly not before the August 5th presentation to City Council. You know, I think it's staff's intent to provide council with some feedback, or, you know, some summaries of the type of feedback that staff provided, and to the extent we could even provide those in full, that would be our desire.
Okay.
Just to be as transparent as possible. So I would not expect any kind of processing of those and a rush to approve those before a chance to present to City Council.
All right, thank you.
Chris, I wanted to take the time, things that I will not be here on Thursday, have a funeral to go to, and an uncle pass away on Saturday, so I'll be able to be here for your little going-away party. But I do believe I'm one of the only ones who were around when you came onboard, and I've seen you go through a lot with the city, a lot of growth. We were at 1,800 homes at one time, and I know how taxing it was on the department that you ran. And to see you where you are today and know what you've contributed to this community, I personally want to thank you for all of your efforts and wish you well in all of your future endeavors moving forward. You've given a lot to this community, more than what most people will ever know, because you worked behind the scenes, you ensured that it was quality development. And we've become the city we've become, a lot of it in part to your oversight. So I want to thank you. Not only have I felt you as a colleague, but considered you a friend for a lot of years, and want to continue that relationship. If you need anything from me, please reach out. But I apologize for not being able to be here this Thursday, but just want to let you know, if I could, if it was any other circumstances, I would be. But you've done the city well, and I appreciate all of that work. All right, thank you. Mr. Huesman?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Almost a year and a half of dealing with this oil and gas issue, and it's enough to make me want to pull my hair out. I've learned a couple of things along the way. I've learned that how divisive the issue can be. I've learned that truly whenever it comes down to it, no matter how much people ask us to listen to our residents, that's not what they really want. What they're really asking us to do is to listen to the residents that agree with them while ignoring those residents that they disagree with. Nowhere was that more apparent than a September evening, when the same group of residents that applauded a question I asked of someone stood up and pointed fingers at me and yelled because they didn't like the question that I asked of them. It's tough. I have tried to walk a line. I've tried to represent people on both sides of this issue. I've tried to make sure that the process has been fair. I've tried to make sure that rules have been followed, and that hasn't garnered me any friends, hasn't garnered me a lot of support, has garnered me quite a few enemies. I see a lot of anger in this community, quite a bit of anger. I assure you, I'm angry too, or I'm angry too. But I think where the anger is being sent is the wrong direction. The nine of us that sit up here are doing our best to follow the law, to follow the process, and to make sure that the impact that we have on this community is the best impact going forward. In November, a new legislature and a new governor took hold. Boulder Democrat Casey Becker, Speaker of the House. Boulder Democrat Jared Polis, Governor. A majority in the Senate, a majority in the House, and they promised the world. 181 was going to fix every single problem that was ever created with oil and gas. They promised a Cadillac, and they delivered a GeoStorm. The reality is, if you want to be angry, those are the people you need to be angry at, because they failed to deliver what they promised you that they were going to give you. They failed to give full local control to cities like Commerce City. They backed down whenever they were pressured. They put the reasonable clause in their own bill. They didn't need Republican support to pass that. They had the support to do it themselves, but for one reason or another, they chose to be cowards and back down in the face and left us with a lemon. Tired of eating on that lemon. I feel like I dine on that lemon every time I sit here at this dais. I truly wish we had the ability to say no. The best thing that we could do in this community is let the 58,000 residents out there decide whether or not we allow this to happen, instead of the nine of us. Unfortunately, we don't have the ability to say no, so a vote like that would be useless. I hear all the time about, "We need a moratorium, we need a moratorium." You got to have a moratorium because 112 is going to come in and save us all. 112 failed. Got to have a moratorium because the Senate's going to do a bill, and it's going to give you the power you need. And we don't have the power that we need. 181 failed you. Now you want us to do a moratorium so the COGCC can write a bunch of rules and figure out where that's going to go. Their timeline has rulemaking going all the way out till August of 2020. How can we honestly sit here and say, "Let's do a moratorium so the COGCC can do some rules," when the COGCC isn't even willing to do a moratorium themselves? How do we have the right to say no when the COGCC won't even do it themselves? I just don't think we do. I saw something online that I want to address whenever it relates to this oil and gas. An individual posted a message, I know she didn't type it, but she posted it, and in that message, it said, "The Commerce City Council Majority and the Mayor have taken over citizen communication." I was absolutely appalled when I read those words. The fact that somebody would think that after coming in here, meeting after meeting after meeting and expressing their point, that just because residents who disagree with that person come in to share their point in the people's chambers means it's been taken over is appalling. These chambers don't belong to one side of an argument or another, they belong to the 58,000 residents of this city, and it will continue. And anytime you think that it belongs to you and you disagree with someone who disagrees coming in here and giving an opposing point of view, I'm sorry, but that's a foul. I appreciate the opportunity to spread these words. I truly wish that we did not have the legislature and the governor we did that promised you the world and gave you nothing. Go beat down Adrian Benavita's door. Go beat down Daphne Michelson-Jenay's door. Go beat down Dominic Moreno's door. And go beat down Governor Polis's door and tell them, "You failed us." Before you come in here and threaten me, try to intimidate me, tell me you're going to sue me, whatever it is you think the scare tactic is that's going to get me to go your Put blame where blame is due, the people who made the law, not the people who took an oath to uphold it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huesman. Is there any further administrative council business? Seeing none, I, after hearing that, I'm empowered to say that, just the other day, I read a quote about not forgetting what government's intent is. The intent of all government is to uphold the constitutional rights of the residents of the United States of America. And it's also important to note, part of those constitutional rights are property rights. We're put, and Mr. Huesman stated it well, but we're put in a compromised position because there are people that own property rights that have the right to access those properties. And I implore anybody that doesn't want those property rights to be accessed to purchase those rights. But it puts us in a bad position because we get threatened, we're going to get sued if we allow oil and gas. But I can assure you, we will get sued if we ban it. So we're in a no-win situation, and I will continue to do my job in the role of government and do my best to uphold the Constitution of the United States for the people that reside in my community. All right, with that said, want to get into reports. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to last week's city manager update, just wanted to confirm something that you've already noticed in your calendars. We do traditionally, whenever there's a fifth Monday and a fifth Tuesday in the month, we will meet with the two school districts that represent our community, but those meetings have been canceled for July, and we traditionally do cancel those meetings in July. The school boards typically don't meet in July. So just confirming, we've removed those from your calendars, and so the next fifth Tuesday meetings, I think, are in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
The city clerk and I both received a notice last week from the attorney who serves as the city's liquor and marijuana licensing authority, Teresa Lau, who served the city for a number of years in different roles, that she's intending to retire. So the city will need to conduct a search and appoint a new individual as the licensing authority for both of those activities. So unless anybody on council disagrees, I would propose to send out a request for proposals to bring back for council's consideration.
Anybody has any disagreement to what the city attorney just said? Thank you, good to go.
Thank you, yes, and that will be towards the end of the year, the retirement would be effective.
Thank you. I'm going to keep my reports short. I think it's important that we report on the Fourth of July, or the lack thereof on our part. We had some bad weather, we have a partnership with Cronky, the game was delayed, another storm came in afterwards. I want to apologize to all the residents that showed up for a great fest in the state fireworks display that didn't happen. I also want to assure them that it is going to happen, and they're going to get plenty of notice when that will happen, so that they can come out and celebrate with us on the Fourth, for the Fourth of July on another day. I also want to thank the residents that didn't go out and shoot off big fireworks. I know there were some, and I know they annoyed other people, and we got those phone calls, and our police department was busy, but I want to thank those who restrained themselves from shooting off fireworks that are illegal within the city. And I want the staff to do their best to try to make up for the show that didn't happen on the Fourth. But I think it's important to thank all of the staff that did go out, and we did have some of the events that took place during the Fourth of July. We did have a police officer that was hit by a vehicle as a pedestrian. From my understanding, she is doing okay. She didn't sustain any major injuries. But again, when you run into a police officer and they have to go to the hospital, that would bother me. It bothered me that it was one of our officers that got hit. Safety always needs to come first, and there was a lot of staff out there in the hail, in the rain, dealing with adverse conditions, trying to ensure that our residents had the opportunity to come out and celebrate and have a good time. Weather is something that still is out of our control. Steve's been working on that for me, trying to fix that to where we can legislate how the weather's going to be, right, Steve?
Yeah.
But I wouldn't blame it on global warming at this point, but I will tell you that storms happen, and sometimes they're unavoidable for us to work around. But you will get a Fourth of July celebration, and you will get notice so that you have time to plan for that. But thank you to all of the staff standing out in the rain and dealing with the adverse conditions while you try to put on a favorable program for our residents to enjoy. That's all I have on my report. Mr. Huesman, do you have something to add to my report?
I do. Speaking of staff, I would just like to congratulate and thank our city clerk, Laura Bauer, for 13 years with the city today. Everything that you do for the city is above reproach, and we appreciate all the support. So thank you for your commitment to the community and the residents that live here.
Thank you. One last thank, yeah, thank you. She does a great job, and she actually chaired some of the clerk organizations, and she's done some pretty amazing stuff, especially with our marijuana enforcement and setting up the permitting. I don't know what we would do without Laura. She's been a great employee, so thanks, Laura. Something else that I had on the tip of my mind that I was going to tell everybody, but it'll come back to me. I'm just getting old. All right, seeing there be no further business, come before the City Council or City Commerce City, I'm adjourning this meeting to the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District. I'm going to call that meeting to order and have the clerk please call the roll. Chairman Ford?